Well, hello everyone and welcome to the Bonneville County Republican Central Committee's semi-annual town hall meeting. Now, I'd like to ask the first question of the evening, since I have the microphone. Who exactly is the Republican Party of Bonneville County? Well, the answer is you, and you, and you, and you, and you, all of you who are here tonight. In fact, could I get the following people to stand? Any past or present precinct officers? Assistant precinct officers? Convention delegates, past or present? Past or present volunteers? Executive committee members? Elected representatives? All right, now I'm going to turn this over to our distinguished gentleman from Idaho Falls, our Central Committee Chairman, Mr. Nick Kontos.
Thanks for standing as well. As we get started, I want to make one quick point. I want to thank everybody who just stood up. Without the volunteers in our county, and in every county across the United States, there would be no Republican Party. There would be no nomination for candidates to seek. There would be no platform for voters to affiliate with. There would be no brand. There would be no definition of what Republican actually is. The Republican Party depends on volunteers. And I really, truly appreciate all the volunteers we have in our county. We have some great people in this county, and that dedicate a ton of time to build a Republican Party that can stand for something, that can accomplish something. And without them, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a Republican Party. There would be no such thing. And that would be, that would be tough for everybody. In it, I'll take just a second maybe and explain the organization of a political party. Every one of us lives in a precinct, which is basically your neighborhood. In every precinct, there is a Republican precinct officer. So in Bonneville County, we have approximately 50 precincts. And of those 50 precincts, each sends one person to be the precinct officer. That forms a central committee. You hear the term Bonneville County Central Committee. That is the governing body of the Republican Party in Bonneville County. That Central Committee elects officers, of which we have some here tonight. Diane Jensen is our First Vice Chair. And Diane is extremely capable and accomplishes so much with the party. We have Anthony Torino, who is our State Committee Man. Anthony has the most fun accent of our group, but it's fading a little bit. Lisa Keller is our State Committee Woman. Lisa has volunteered for the party for many years, and has been integral into keeping a Republican Party in our county. Jonathan Cook is our Youth Committee Man. He's obviously the youngest of our committee here. Don't let him fool you, though. He's very competent as well. Ben Marston is actually a friend of mine from way back, and he is extremely capable as well. Ben is our Third Vice Chairman, Fourth Vice Chairman, sorry. And Barbara Miller is our Treasurer in Bonneville County. Each of these officers has been elected by the Central Committee in our county to do the work. I was invited to attend a Republican Party meeting 10 years ago myself, and you have to be careful when you do that, because here we are 10 years later, and I got picked this year to conduct the meetings and do whatever work the committee can have me do. So, again, I think we ought to give a round of applause to everybody who participates and works for free to create a Republican Party in our county.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get on with our questions. Our first question comes from Brent Southersway. Brent, would you care to stand? And we'll give you a microphone, and you can read your question.
Let's see if we could ask the committee, how does the platform help us govern ourselves? And a follow-up, who has input to this platform thing?
Great question, Brent. Who's our first volunteer to answer that one? Diane?
So, the platform, I just printed up. So this is our state platform. All of the delegates that go to convention every year, every two years, excuse me, have a say in what happens and what gets put or changed on this platform. If you, as a Republican, have an idea of how to make this platform better, or to make changes on it, you can talk to your precinct committee officer, you can talk to any one of us, and you can submit a proposal for a change, then we can help you work that out, make the language fit, and then we can present it at the state convention, where all of the delegates from the entire state get to discuss your proposal and vote on it, and it has to pass with a majority vote of all of those delegates that are there. So, we the people make that platform.
Thanks, Diane. I'll tag on to that. If you have never had an opportunity to attend a state convention of the Republican Party, you need to put that on your bucket list. There's 700 delegates from all across the state. You know, our county will send about 50. And at a state convention, which happens every two years, the Republican Party writes its platform. And that written platform defines what a Republican Party is, what it stands for, what we are trying to accomplish. And it gets modified, and adjusted, and amended, and in some cases rewritten, every two years, by the people that are elected in each county.
Okay, I've got the next question, Mr. Brett Skidmore from Precinct 15, 58. Can you read yours?
I was just doing a count on your website, and you have vacancies for POCs. And there's between six or seven vacancies. What's the process of replacing those?
Good question. A precinct officer in each county, or in each precinct...
That does not apply to my precinct.
Oh, you are a precinct officer, that's right. You're an assistant precinct officer, yes. And every precinct officer needs, needs a representative on that Central Committee, so that we can have someone from every neighborhood. We have a few in our county where, well, in some cases, people move. We have constant turnover as people move. In some cases, we have a few, I think, a couple out by Gray's Lake, where there's very few people living out there, where we struggle to find someone, and we're looking. But when there is a vacancy, if somebody would like to serve as that precinct officer, they need to reach out to a current or existing precinct officer, anybody on the, on the Central Committee. And if they're willing to serve in that position, they can apply to serve, and we can appoint and fill that vacancy. The elections for precinct officer will be coming up. They come up every May, or every other May, in Republican primaries. And so, in your neighborhood, you will have a chance to choose your Republican precinct officer that will be your participant on the, on the Central Committee, and you're, you're linked to the Republican Party that's your next-door neighbor. Want to add on to that?
I'm holding. Oh, there we go. Now it's on. Is it on? Good. One of the things that, you know, the... Precinct Committee Officers are the real grassroots, bottom of the, bottom of the pack where you get elected. That's the very, I mean, let's not call it the lowest, because it's so important, but it's the closest to the people. And so, you know, Mr. Skidmore's question is very important. Why do we not have somebody in those precincts? We really do need to be represented closest to the people. And those precinct committee officers tell us, as an executive committee, what to do. And it's really, it's a great way to get involved, if you have not been involved before. And I have two assistant precinct committee officers, and they are fantastic. They help me so much in knowing what my precinct wants, in putting together things that we are doing, like our Lincoln Day banquet, you know? They are there to help for those types of things, which is our fundraiser for the year. And so, I would like you to know that a precinct committee officer is very important. And if you're willing, we'd love to talk to you.
What about inactive POCs? Is there a process of replacing those?
Well, the, that's going to be a little bit up to the neighborhood. Our bylaws state, current bylaws state that if a precinct officer is absent for 10 consecutive months, that the position is considered vacant. But they also allow that if there is a precinct officer that is not, not active, not attending, not participating, the committee can, can recruit and appoint an assistant precinct officer that can fill in and be the substitute in meetings and, and votes.
Okay. Our next question, Jaleen Berger, would you please stand? Jaleen?
Do you have it? I can't remember. All right, could you explain why we are having a caucus? I'm concerned that a lot of people won't be able to come and vote.
Great question. Who wants the caucus question? Diane, again.
Okay, so the legislature did away with our presidential primary election, and so the state Republican Party got to work and put together an opportunity for us to continue to have a voice in the, in the presidential primaries. So they put together a firehouse caucus, which is not like a caucus that you went to the last time we had one in Idaho. This one, each precinct will have their own caucus, a couple of them will be together. So your polling place will likely be at the place that you normally vote in. And it will start at noon, you'll come, there'll be a presentation. We do have six members on, or six candidates on the ballot, even though some have suspended their, their campaigns, but they're still on the ballot. So you show up at your polling place, and you'll be notified. The state will send you a postcard to your mailing address on your voter registration. So you'll know where your polling place is, and you'll be able to show up and cast your vote.
I'll tag on to that one as well. The caucus is going to be fun. A caucus is different than a primary. You go and gather with your neighbors, and you can talk to them. You can sit there and you can talk to them and tell them why you're voting for who you're voting for. Your vote will be, will be private, and cast, and collected, and counted safely, but a caucus is supposed to be a community event, where we go and we share in our collective wisdom, and knowledge, and opinions, and it's going to be fun in each neighborhood. Yes, you need to be a registered Republican as of December 31st, 2023, in order to be on the list and the rolls for voting in the caucus.
Okay, next question comes from Peggy Merkel. Actually, she's, extra credit, she's got two questions. So go ahead and ask the first one, and then we'll get to the second one.
Okay, I don't know exactly how all of this works with the PCOS and everything, but I was just wondering if in the future, something can be done to have the PCOS be more interactive with their districts? I know that it's all volunteer, and everybody's got jobs, et cetera. But I've, I've been here like for 16 years, and I've never had any contact from a PCO at all. So I don't know if that's normally what you do, reach out to the people in your district, but anyway, either going door-to-door, calling, or texting, or emailing. And again, I don't know normally how you contact the people in your district, but that was one, my first question.
The first thing I can say is, make sure you get in contact with this fine gentleman over here before the night's over. Rusty can tell you which precinct you're in, and who your precinct officer is, and we'll get you in touch with them. Absolutely, absolutely. So, want to tag on to that? Ben?
You know, I think part of the problem that you have is, because we're volunteers, sometimes people just don't go out and do it, and it's just part of reality. And of course, we do our best to make sure that, that we do, and when we see that people aren't being contacted, that we encourage people to. Part of what you're seeing also is that in the past, someone could be a PCO, and they could just sit in their seat forever, even though they weren't doing anything. Maybe they don't even come to the meetings. And we've seen that as an issue. So like what Nick mentioned before, we amended our bylaws, so that if someone doesn't attend 10 consecutive meetings, that they automatically resign. And what that does is, when you have kind of these seat holders, PCOs, who aren't, aren't doing anything, that they're kind of forced to resign, so that we have somebody who does contact you. And I would say, since you've noticed for 16 years, no one's contacted you, maybe you could change things, you could contact yourself. That'd be great, so.
But I just think people would love to hear from their PCOs, and, and see it as a way they can express their voice and their concerns, because I think people are starting to get very, very concerned.
I see, I see that too. And, and we are seeing precinct officers in our county getting more and more involved. Many of our precinct officers are starting to have even cottage meetings, walking their precincts, reaching out, giving recommendations as elections coming up, informing the voters about candidates on the ballot and issues. That is growing by leaps and bounds, actually.
Yeah. I'm just curious, do you have a listing of the residents in their precincts, so you have their phone number, their email address, that you could contact them that way?
We have availability of voter registrations, but not full contact information.
Okay. Then my second question was regarding ranked choice voting. I was, I know that there's like little flyers out there, but I was just curious how the masses were getting notified about ranked choice voting? If, you know, you need volunteers to go door-to-door with these flyers, or just to talk with people? It's very important, and I, I understand that we have people going, groups in parking lots, approaching people, asking them to sign an approval of ranked choice voting. And so, they're being very proactive to get, to get their signatures for approval of ranked choice voting, and obviously, we don't want that. So, how are, how is like the Central Committee, or the Republican Party, whatever, notifying people about ranked choice voting? I know you yourself, Nick, made a great video about ranked choice voting that explained it very clearly, and I don't know if there's a way to get that out to the masses, but it's really something we should all be concerned about for Idaho.
It is. Ranked choice voting is a big topic. Jonathan?
Hi, I'm the Youth Committee Man on the Executive County, Executive Committee, but I'm also the Executive Committee Liaison to our Communications Committee. And I can tell you that we are hitting the ground running with response to ranked choice voting, and the Open Primaries Initiative is their calling it. We are putting together game plans essentially for what we want to do, to get the word out there and to inform our voters about the dangers of ranked choice voting. But if you would like to help, you could definitely volunteer, and we would really appreciate that. We can use all the hands we can get.
Both the state and the county is working on that. The state is, is doing publicity, and they're ramping up, as well as our county. We have flyers and handouts and, and things in the works.
Yeah, I would just add, as a volunteer... But I am a volunteer, and I agree with you, Peggy. 16 years is way too long to go without knowing who your PCO is. That's ridiculous. The other way to clear that up is to run for PCO yourself. We need more people like you to speak out, and volunteer, and just more people... Look, look around the room. We have many empty chairs, and these all could be filled with passionate people like you. Really appreciate the question. I also understand the state understands that, this really isn't working, is it? The state has pretty much sent us the message that they're gathering the signatures for ranked choice voting, and there's not much we can do to stop the 65,000 signatures that they need to get it on the ballot. What can happen is, after that occurs, then the real fight will begin. And we've heard, right, that that is in the works, but we do need help on the Communications Committee, and all the, the precincts in this area, to get the word out to vote against it, when it, when it appears on the November ballot, so.
Hey, Chris, just real quick, there's just a quick follow-up here. Nick, can you guys shed some light on what exactly is ranked choice voting? Because we see the initiatives and everything, and some folks in the room might know what it is, other folks don't.
You bet. It's, it's very important that we educate our friends and neighbors. Ranked choice voting is a huge change to the way we elect our representatives and our government officials in, in our state and our county. I believe will have a very detrimental effect. The Republican Party has spoken out loudly against it, because ranked choice voting, what is being proposed in Idaho, is actually much more than just ranked choice voting. It's also open primary initiative. And so, they, the initiative that is being proposed is 19 pages long. It changes our election system entirely. And on the very first page of it, it states that any candidate can claim to be part of any party, and need not actually be associated with that party. Now let that sink in a little bit. Where I come from, that's called a lie. But this initiative is 19 pages long. It will allow any candidate to get, to claim to be part of any party, then will allow anyone to vote for those candidates. So our right to work together with friends and neighbors to form a political party, an organization, and to pick our favorite candidate, called a nominee, is essentially stripped away from us if this were to pass. And the primaries would be a, an open primary, a jungle primary, some people call it. And that, that's the first and foremost problem. The second problem is that then, when it came to a general election, they would be using a ranked choice voting procedure. So your ballot in Bonneville County today might include 20 races. We have county commissioners, county prosecutor, coroner, we have representatives, senators. You might have 20, 20 candidates, 20 races on your ballot. And each of you has to study up on those candidates and vote for one candidate in each of those 20 races. You have to fill in 20 bubbles on Election Day. If ranked choice voting were to pass, there would be four candidates for each one of those races, plus a write-in. And you would have to rank each of those candidates. So instead of calling your friend the night before the election and saying, who's the better coroner in town? You have to call your friend the night before the election and say, what's the way to rank the four coroners correctly? Then when you get your ballot, you have to fill out 120 bubbles. Then that ballot gets sent centrally to Boise, where they run it through a computer and tabulate it, and the computer determines which of the candidates has the least amount of votes, and eliminates those and reassigned the votes, and eliminates the second least and assigns those votes. And then the computer will tell you, after it does those calculations, who won. So, I'm not in favor of that. I don't know about you, but ranked choice voting is a very serious thing, and it's important that we inform our friends and neighbors of what's really happening. Because as, as you mentioned, those who are pushing this initiative, they're out collecting signatures. We suspect many of them are being paid, but they're out collecting signatures, and trying to get signatures to put this on the ballot. And they're telling part of the story, saying it will be a good thing, saying it'll help us get better candidates, or different things. They're not telling the full story. They're getting some signatures, but if they are successful in getting enough signatures and getting on the ballot, it will be important that every Idahoan understands just exactly what is being proposed. And it's not a small thing. Lisa?
Really briefly, it is confusing. I mean, if you watch Nick's video, he makes it pretty clear, but it is confusing enough in the way it is being presented to you as open primaries, which does not exactly really what it is, that even some of our legislators are confused about what ranked choice voting actually is. And there might be some of our good Republican legislators who say they're in favor of it because they don't understand. So we need to get the word out, like you said, and help people understand just how damaging this is.
So ranked choice voting flies in the face of one man, one vote. It's a foundational principle of our democracy. I find that any time we go against what the framers intended for our nation, we wind up with unintended consequences. It's a road that we shouldn't go down. It literally is, is the opposite of what they intended for our nation to be, and the individual rights of our citizens. Nick introduced me earlier as the State Committee Man. I'm also the Recruitment Chair.
Thanks. That's correct.
All right, any more follow-ups on ranked choice voting? We have a follow-up question here.
Consider yourself recruited.
We have a follow-up question here? Yes, I'll come to you.
What is the deadline on this signature thing?
Uh, good question. I believe it's May.
I believe they have until May to collect roughly 65,000 signatures. They'll need about 100,000 signatures, because some of those will be people who have signed and aren't actually registered voters in their right areas. Their, last I heard, had about 50,000. So I, I sincerely hope they do not succeed in getting the 100,000 signatures they need. Irregardless, it's important that, that we educate voters in our communities what's being proposed. It's, it's going to be very bad for our state and our communities if we put in an electoral system and don't know what we're actually doing, and have unintended consequences that could last years.
Another question.
The vote, the vote will be in November, not May.
That's what they are aiming for, I believe.
Any more questions on ranked choice voting?
So not only that, but I do know, they're, they're being a little bit deceptive too with how they're targeting this. Somehow, I wound up on their text list, and actually got a message to come out and sign on one of their campaigns. And I'm like, no, absolutely not. First off, they're calling the primary the most important election. Well, it is for the party. It's not for everybody, it's for the party. Second off, they're using the 270,000 registered independents, claiming that they don't have a say-so, they don't have a vote. So we need your help to get them that vote. Well, if there's 270,000 independents, establish your own party.
All right, hot-button issue here. Any more comments or questions on ranked choice voting? Here we go.
Well, I'm just going to speak to the open primaries, because that's an integral part of the initiative. I got into a bit of a kerfuffle with one person that was supportive of open primaries. Well, we can't, we have to be able to run for, as a candidate for a particular office. I says, go ahead and run. In the, in the, election isn't independent or whatever, and they want to run as a Republican. But I, I use the analogy of maintaining the integrity of the brand. In other words, you know, if you spent years developing a brand and had a reputation for X, Y, Z company, you wouldn't want somebody else claiming to represent the, everything about your company. That's why we have copyrights and, and protection against intellectual property. We want to maintain the brand, that's why we have a platform, you know? If you don't have a platform, wouldn't I be able to say, because of my DEI training, that because I feel I'm a Republican, I'm automatically a Republican? Right? So, they, they've got to understand that, and that's why Mark Fuller, you know, started the idea of, go ahead and run as a Republican if you've registered as a Republican before, and just so we have transparency, tell, tell us in writing what part of the platform you disagree with. What's wrong with that? That's transparency. And I, then I know what I'm voting for, because most people won't do all the hours of esoteric research to know, like you say, every candidate under ranked choice voting, of course, that quadruples their research efforts. People won't do that in the real world. So to maintain brand integrity, maybe they could understand that metaphor, or to understand the flaws in open primaries.
I will say, I think it's important for us to be very clear about the principles. As a Republican Party, we believe that every citizen has a right to vote. And they do. November elections, we believe every qualified citizen should be allowed to vote. We also believe that every qualified person should be able to run for office. And they have that right. We have the right to run for office. But thirdly, we believe in the right of association, that people have the right to associate, to form organizations, and then in that organization, to choose their favorite candidate and collectively support that candidate in an election. Those rights are not mutually exclusive. We, we believe in all three of those rights.
All right, any more questions or comments on ranked choice voting or open primary initiatives? One and the same. I feel like Phil Donahue, you all remember Phil Donahue? Running around the audience, only those of us over 50 would know who Phil Donahue is, right? is, right? All the kids are going, "What?"
Are we going to move on, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Oh, this guy.
Here we go.
Can someone just explain why the legislature got rid of the primaries?
Was it financial? Was it political? What was the cause?
There's a lot of theories about that, and I won't speak for them. The Secretary of State proposed a law that would have eliminated the presidential primary. In Idaho, we have a separate presidential primary, at least we have since 2012. The party specifically lobbied long and hard for that because it's important for our state to be able to have a voice in presidential primaries before all the other 49 states have made the decision for us. So we lobbied long and hard for that, and were successful in getting a presidential primary in Idaho in 2012. This year, the Secretary of State proposed a rule that would remove that, and the intent, the stated intent was to move it back to May, which would be much, much later in the election cycle. And that passed the House, it moved on to the Senate where there was discussion, and they realized that it would actually cancel the primary entirely. One way or another, it still passed, and the governor still signed it into law. That left Idaho with no presidential primary whatsoever, neither March nor May. And it was, it was talked about as a cost savings, it would save the state $2.7 million. The party has stepped in, and by holding a caucus, we would say that we're saving the state $2.7 million. And allowing Republican voters to have a voice and to be able to participate early on. Idaho is fifth or sixth in the nation. Coming up here, March 2nd, we will be able to have our voice and, and speak about who should be the next Republican nominee for president.
And I was just going to say, we have like 32 delegates, is that right? For Idaho, some of the, most in the whole country. So, we are important in this race.
All right. We're going to go ahead and change topics here with a question from Paul White, Precinct 21.
I'll preface this by saying I'm new to Idaho, so I don't really know the specifics here. But my question is, what is the platform regarding civil forfeiture? It varies across the country. Seems to me like it's promifascia unconstitutional.
First off, welcome to Idaho.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'm not aware if our platform, consider yourself recruited. I'm not aware if our, our platform speaks about that topic specifically. And it's an opportunity, whenever a topic like that comes up that our platform doesn't speak on, it's an opportunity for our committee, for volunteers in each county, to make proposals as the platform is rewritten every two years, and to add important topics like that in there. I could be mistaken, but I don't believe there's a clause about civil asset forfeiture. Rusty?
Oh, Anthony.
I don't know if anybody's paid attention to the case that came out of California where the FBI raided a safe deposit box business. And because the people who ran that business were crooked, the FBI thought, "Hey, this is a golden opportunity to use the civil forfeiture laws to confiscate all of the items in every single box in that entire business." So those people just finally got the decision in their favor, the FBI is huge overreach. Not only did the FBI steal basically every single item that belonged to those individuals who had safe deposit boxes in that business, but they also used those items to generate an investigation list. So let's say you had $50,000 in your safe deposit box. The FBI said, "Hey, how'd that guy get 50 grand? Is he a drug dealer? Let's start an investigation." Luckily, the judiciary stepped in, or for lack of a better term, spanked them a little bit, told them they can't do that anymore. The FBI even went so far as to want, as to surrender and give the plaintiffs everything they wanted in the hopes that they wouldn't have a public judgment against them. The judge actually refused and didn't let them do that. They wanted the public judgment. So it's civil forfeiture of that, that incredible overreach, I can't imagine any conservative being on the side of civil forfeiture.
Okay, I've got another question from James Parker. Oh, sorry.
I don't think it worked. There it goes. Just so we're clear, so on the screen right behind Nick there, you can see the website. So if you go to our website, you can get on there and of course navigate around. You can see all the PCO names for the different precincts, so that's where you can find that information. You can see the bylaws, you can see the platform. So you can get into all this detail, okay? And not that we're not going to deal with it here, but it's, you know, it's very, there's a lot of text in here, okay? So please, please do visit. There's a lot of information on there of what you can, like his question, like Paul's question, you know, what's the status of that? So you can go find that information there.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay, James Parker, oh, one more.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to know about what our current laws are here. The prosecution's right here.
Okay, James Parker, Precinct 24. Where you at? Porter. That's why you get to read your question.
Yeah, I do have kind of hard-to-read handwriting. Okay, so I think most people here all are pretty united in, in some of our thoughts. And I'd like to address some of the questions that have come up recently with the platform enforcement measures. Some legislators are skeptical that the party can really strip them of their ability to call themselves Republicans. What can the party really do?
Good question. You've asked a question about the platform enforcement procedures and the state party rules. The Republican Party has updated their rules as they, as they do every, every six months or so. And in the latest iteration of the state, of the state Republican Party rules, it lays out a procedure for elected officials at any level, from the governor on down to county coroner. Those officials who are Republican nominees and have committed actually in writing to advance the Republican platform, the, the party put in place a procedure where the, the precinct officers that make up that respective committee can discuss their concerns if that elected official is not following the platform that, that he or she has committed to follow. And so, that would apply to any body of the Republican Party. If, if the state, a state official such as the governor were to be going in complete contradiction to the Republican Party platform, the state committee, which would consist of several hundred people, could meet and discuss if that's a concern or not, and could speak up about that. As a political party organization, committees and organizations have a right to speak up as a body about how they feel on, on a topic. And if it continues to become an issue, they can take steps to limit that elected official's ability to, to use the Republican Party logos and signatures and, and the brand.
Okay. Was there a follow-up on that one?
Yeah, it was. I mean, your, your question, I think, was, is how enforceable is it going to be? Is that right? So, it's a tough question because I don't know that this has necessarily been done before with the party. The idea, the premise behind it is that we have a right of association granted in the U.S. Constitution. And so, if somebody claims that they associate with the Republican Party, but we don't believe that they do, and, and we refuse to associate with them, that should be our constitutional right to, to enforce that decision on the Republican Party's part. Exactly how that would end up playing out and, and what a final say is, say by like a judge would be, you know, you'd have to see. But I, I do think we're right in that there's no question we have the right of association. And for some, if some, so long as a judge makes the right decision, then I think that that right would be enforced.
Okay. I think you need to distinguish between identifying as a Republican and being a Republican representative. Those are two different things. So, can you take away somebody's self-identification as a Republican? I don't think you can do that, or their ability to do that. But these, what we're talking about now is we're talking about representatives, we're talking about candidates, people that have filed to represent, that hold themselves out as a Republican to represent other Republicans. And that's a completely different issue.
I'll tag on real quick before we get there as well. A lot of this is not new principles. The Republican Party has always had procedures in place. If, I mean, extreme example, if Bernie Sanders or Hillary Clinton moved to Idaho tomorrow and said, "I'm, I'm going to run for office as a Republican," the Republican Party has always had the ability as the committee or whoever they're running to say, "No, that's not going to fly." That's always been in place. There's been a lot of talk about this because there's some new procedures, new ways about going about things, but that concept, the right of association, is, is nothing new.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question. Seems a little bit logical to me, but I don't know whether that logic is just being removed from the world. But if a person has been vote, has been voted in by we the people to follow a platform that we, who are a group of people, Republicans, want them to follow, and they're not, why can't we just get rid of them? If they're not following the platform, they aren't representing us, why do they have more rights than we do?
Who wants to jump in first?
I had a, just with those, I mean, sorry. So about the freedom of association, just like churches have, just like churches have membership, and you can, what's it called? Excommunicate, yeah, that's the word. So you can excommunicate. I mean, that's well-established that organizations can do that. Now, there's a difference between the elected office, which is the governmental side, but for someone to say, "I'm representing a group," the group can say, "No, you don't."
Yeah. To clarify a little bit too, an elected official is elected by the entire electorate, electorate in his, he or she's representative area, whether that's a county or state or precinct or, or whatever area. And all voters can and should choose their elected officials to do whatever jobs it is, whether it's a representative, whether it's an executive in the, in the governor's house, or whether it's a county coroner. And we as a Republican Party believe that people should be actively engaged in that and should be involved and paying attention and informed as much as possible about those who are running their government, because they have chosen them. Now, separate from that is a nomination. A candidate may be nominated by the Republican Party or the Democrat Party. And that candidate has been nominated by a group of people who have voluntarily formed an organization and voluntarily chose to work together to support a candidate. Those are two, two separate things. And it's important that we keep that distinction between an election and a nomination. They're, they're not the same thing.
Follow-up comment?
Yes, I just want to, one thing back to the original question. So you can read this on the website, this is going to be short. So all the legislators, all these office holders, they sign an affiliation integrity pledge, they actually sign it, they read it and sign it. This is short, it's what they read and what they've signed. "I have read the Idaho Constitution and the Idaho Republican Party platform. I support the Idaho Republican platform and accept it as a standard by which my performance as a candidate and as an office holder should be evaluated. I certify that I'm not a candidate, officer, delegate, or position holder of any other party than the Republican Party." That's to your question. Why is this going on? Because they signed this stuff and they took a different direction, and we're calling them up on it.
Kelly?
Hey, we have an anonymous question here. Whoop. Oh.
Okay. Hold up.
Sorry, just a follow-up on this is, America, America's not a democracy, it's a republic. Which means that we elect people who are there to represent us. That doesn't mean that when they get there, they're going to represent us unless we, the people, make our voice heard and let them know how we want them to vote on the specific platform or, or issues. They're not going to vote platform, they might get a whole bunch of phone calls, a whole bunch of inputs from their other representatives who either didn't elect them, didn't vote for them, or did vote for them but still want them to vote however they did. So unless we get involved in not only local, state, and federal politics and call our representatives, the representatives are going to either vote one, based upon their own inputs and what they want to think, based upon two, whatever special interest groups funds them and gives them money, or three, the number of people who call them and call them and call them on specific issues. And if we don't let them know how to vote from what we do, they're going to vote and not represent us.
Well put. Take it away, Kelly.
To answer your question directly, your elected officials do not have any right that you do not have. They are not shielded by their position. They are subject to their constituents. The, we're talking about censure. So one of the, the consequences of deviating from the platform according to the new enforcement rules is censure. Censure is simply a public exemplification of disapproval. "I disapprove of you." I don't, I can't imagine that this country would permit its elected officials to be above the disapproval of their constituents. And any elected official who says that they're above censure or is somehow not responsible or not, uh, uh, subject to the opinions of their own constituents, they're not living in the America that I live in.
All right. Okay, next topic.
Okay. Kind of in the same vein, but a little different. Is it a violation of duty of the Central Committee to the people to recommend candidates when the people are choosing the candidates at the primary? So our candidate recommendation process?
Great question. Thank you. Is it, is it wrong for the party volunteers who make up the organization to speak to the voters who affiliate with that organization? When we have a primary election, all people who are registered as their affiliation with the Republican Party are allowed to help make that primary decision. I believe the responsibility of a precinct officer or of any party official is to inform the voters in his or her precinct. And that has happened from time to time across Idaho, it continues to happen more and more often. Voters look to the party to inform them about the candidates that are on the ballot, especially in our county where there's essentially one party. This, this committee, the Bonneville County Central Committee, has made some recommendations in the past, and about which candidates the precinct officers feel most, most accurately aligned with the Republican Party platform. And gotten many, many thanks from voters that were interested in those candidates and wanted to know about those candidates, and wanted to know what their precinct officers thought about the candidates that were running for office. And I, I want to praise the committee. We had, we've had committees in our county that have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours studying up on candidates that were seeking the party nomination, interviewed them, did questionnaires with them, met with them, studied up on them, researched the funding of their campaigns, their stances on issues, and brought all that information forward and shared it with the public. I believe that's one of the main duties of a party organization, is to inform the voters on where potential candidates stand in relation to the platform that voters affiliate with.
All right. Follow-up here? Follow-up question?
What is the duty of the party to the candidate who win the primary election? Is it the duty of the, of the party to back the candidates? Or do they still, we say divide and conquer if they feel like there's somebody that they, they didn't want to run as a member of the party?
That's, that's a good follow-up to that question. I believe that when, when a candidate wins the nomination of the organization, the organization follows its own procedures, its own rules, and generally supports that candidate on to general election. Especially if there's a, if there's a challenger from another party. As an organization, the Republican Party exists, each one of the volunteers who dedicate their time and passion, they do it because they want to advance the Republican Party platform. And they want to be as effective as they can with that. And it's hard work, because we all have different opinions. Amongst us, amongst everyone in this room, we all have different opinions, we have different personalities, different attitudes. I can tell you, it is a lot of hard work to gather people together and to work together and to come to consensuses and to be and to come to consensuses and to be effective and accomplish things. And so there are compromises made sometimes, but we are doing everything we can to advance that platform. And that applies in elections. If we have a candidate that can advance our platform better than, obviously, say, the Democrat candidate, we want to encourage that person to be elected so that we can do the best we can to advance our principles. Well, after the primary, we have one candidate for each office. That's what the nomination accomplishes. It gathers all of our votes together behind that one candidate for office.
A candidate didn't make the primary, and so they did not support them in the general election.
Yeah, a great example. We have an upcoming presidential election, and each of us may have different preferences about which one of the Republican candidates we want to be our champion, to be our nominee. And that will be determined as primaries and caucuses happen throughout the states. There will be one Republican nominee. Generally, we all get behind that one Republican nominee because what's the alternative? I don't think anybody here, I'm betting, wants Joe Biden to be the next president. And so that's why we compromise, that's what a party is. We compromise, we work together to put our best candidate forward with very defectiveness. Sometimes we get candidates that adhere to our platform strictly and make great progress towards that. Other times, not so much, and we have more work to do.
It seems to me that you need to think about a candidate and the party as an agreement. It's a two-way agreement, okay? To the extent that the candidate supports the platform and does their part, the party then also has their part, you know? So like if you have an agreement with somebody, if you do this, I'll do that, right? If one of you fails to do that, that's a breach of the agreement. That relieves the other party of their duty, okay? So if you have a candidate who says they're a representative, they'll support the platform, they'll follow the platform, they sign and pledge to do that, and then breach that pledge, okay? Breach their, what then happens to the party's duty to support that candidate, right? Like any other breach of contract, they're relieved of that duty, right? It's a two-way street. It's not a one-way street. If you're the candidate, that's it, blind faith, we're just going to, we're just going to fall in line, lockstep. It doesn't work that way. It's a two-way street.
Okay, couple, last two follow-up questions here.
In the past, it used to be that the county party would not take sides during a primary, they would remain neutral. Has that policy changed?
It hasn't. And I think one of the main reasons for that, in our last primary election here in Bonneville County, there was only one Democrat that ran. And that kind of begs the question, if the party organization is neutral in primaries and there are no other parties putting forward candidates in the general election, then what reason do we have to exist? And as I stated before, I believe the main reason for a party organization to exist is written in our platform. We exist, we volunteer our time and passion and effort because we believe in those principles. I want my children to be free, to have the rights and the freedoms that are expressed in the Republican Party platform. And we work hard to advance those principles any way we can.
Sure. So just to speak to this idea about giving recommendations about people. So I'm reminded of the guy from New York that got expelled recently. He was a Republican. Santos?
Santos.
So I was listening to Bill O'Reilly once, and he said, because he's from New York, right? And he said, you know, I would have expected the Republican Party to have, you know, filtered him out, you know, to the actual party, you know, not necessarily the voters. And in truth, you know, what he's saying there is, I am putting an expectation on the actual group to protect its brand and to try and get good quality people. And so with these sort of nominations, or not nominations, but recommendations, that's what's happening, is you're collecting a lot of data and looking at people, and then people that are actually getting involved, looking at them and saying, you know, I like these ones more than those ones. Now, that doesn't mean that the Republican base, meaning the actual members of the entire party, can't choose someone else. They certainly can. But anyway, I mean, I know it's a, some people like it, some people don't, you know? But that's some of the different options there.
I'll tag on one quick point there. As a party organization, we spend an awful lot of time out there recruiting and encouraging people to run for office. We want more people to run for office, and we want more people to seek the Republican Party nomination. And the party explicitly thanks everyone who has sought the Republican Party nomination and reaches out to each one of them, invites them to communicate with the party organization, with the committees, and to share their views on things. And so we appreciate and always encourage more people to seek our nomination as well as to seek the election.
Sorry, last, absolute last comment. I'm just reading this from the State Party Rules, and this has been a rule for a long time. It says, "County central committees may determine the political affiliation of candidates filing or declaring an intent to file as Republican candidates for county political offices and may endorse Republican candidates for any position being voted on in that county in the primary and general election." And that also is true for legislative districts and the state central committee.
Okay, Brent, last comment there?
Yeah, on this concept, yeah, of not opposing, let's see, not having an opinion about those who are running in the primary. I was elected as PCO in May of 2022 and met with the candidate who achieved our nomination one-on-one, four or five days after I was elected. It's in Legislative District 35, I believe it's seat A or seat B. That individual unfortunately did not convince me. He voted for Joe Biden, he had presumption of mischief and not willing to identify with our platform. And so I, in my precinct, tried to make that aware. That's a continuing issue on the very basic level that we are in in our county right now. Legislative District 35 has that same situation now. And another opposing candidate, I think who's much better, he's in the room tonight.
We're about an hour into our questions, and you know what? Those cookies are not going to eat themselves. Y'all get back there and eat some cookies. Bev, you want a cookie?
I'll have a cookie.
All right. So John Hill, are you still here? John Hill, John Hill, you have a question? Read that for us. I'll give you the mic.
Well, my concern is we would learn from the frustration of states like Florida where they're trying to mitigate professors or even teachers in K through 12 from aggressively teaching diversity, equity, and inclusion from a left-wing secular progressive worldview. And inevitably, de facto or overtly not or censoring the opposing view. And legislation in some states has passed to prevent that from happening, but there's always the ability of a devoted leftist to skirt the intent of the legislation and still de facto teach diversity, equity, and inclusion to students in their formative years. So my question is, is there a good way to mitigate that and not get them too much opportunity to de facto be teaching DEI? And in the, that's relevant to everything we're talking about heretofore because that's where the farm team produces Democrats. I can cite some research that, more than one piece of research, that when students in K through 12 are exposed to DEI principles, they're much more likely to vote for liberals, even if they have a parent who may be conservative, though that mitigates some of the effect of that. So can Republican legislators learn from some of those mistakes that Florida has experienced or other conservative states so that the legislation would be better crafted to enable students to experience the best rebuttals to DEI if there's no way to mitigate their exposure to the leftist version of DEI?
So as youth committeemen, this is kind of my area of expertise. Legislators can pass bills and laws and whatnot to try and enforce what teachers can teach in the classroom, but when you get right down to it, it's not going to solve the problem because you can't have a camera or somebody from the state watching every teacher teach. So teachers are going to teach whatever they want to teach. It's just going to happen. That's just how it is. The most effective way to ensure that all ideas get out is to teach young people about these ideas outside of state-run education systems. That's why it's great that there are organizations like Turning Point USA, Young Americans for Freedom, Young Americans Foundation, et cetera, et cetera. But if you want to talk about the grassroots aspect of it, it comes down to you guys, the PCOs, the volunteers, the general public. I know everyone in here probably has sons, daughters, grandsons, granddaughters, niece, nephew, whatever. You guys got to talk to them about politics, even if they don't want to talk about politics, which a lot of them really don't. But it comes down, right down to you guys because they're not going to hear the opposing view in schools. That's just the way it is. I'm a student here, and if I didn't know as much as I did from my parents, I'd probably be a blue-haired liberal by now. Because that's just the way the education system works. So it's you guys. You guys got to talk to the young people and convince them that there are other views on things.
Just to tag on to what Jonathan was saying, the caucus that we have coming up here in March is actually a perfect opportunity to bring your kids and get them introduced to a really fun, lightweight, political, like what the political world looks like. When my boys were first and second grade, it was, it was 2008, and we went to a Republican caucus in another state, and they had a blast. They got cookies and stickers and donuts and candidates showed up, but it gave them a lifelong appreciation for the process and who different candidates were, and it just triggered their interest. And so as people are talking about the caucus coming up, encourage them to bring their kids. We'll have, we'll have stickers, we'll have fun. It's going to be your friends and neighbors in your area. And so just really encourage people, this is not an adults-only, super formal event. This is something that's supposed to be fun for everybody. Speaking of caucus, Ralph Lentz, are you still, we've got a question for you.
I know what my question is. And I'm not volunteering in front of Anthony, but... So you mentioned, Nick, that when we go to the caucus, we can talk about the candidates. But what's the agenda? I mean, when I walk in at high noon, what should I expect to happen, other than just visit with my friends?
Good question. Diane?
So when you come in at noon, you will register. We have a poll book for each precinct, so you'll show your ID and register, or prove that you're in the right place. If you're not in the right place, we'll send you to the right place. And then you'll come in and you'll watch presentations from all of the candidates. We will have audiovisual equipment, you know, screens so that you can watch all the presentations from all the candidates. I'm not sure how many that will be at this point. It might just be Trump and Haley, but we don't know because there's still six candidates on the ballot. There will be probably a prayer and a pledge and a welcome from your precinct committee officer, and then you will be queued up to get a ballot. You'll mark your ballot, put it in the ballot box, and have some cookies or donuts or whatever, whatever else is going on in your precinct. And then you're free to leave after that, or you're free to hang out.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you don't have to watch the presentations, do you? You could just come in, you can just get your handstand, you know, verify that you are who you are, go get your ballot, go vote it, and leave. You know, it depends entirely on how much time you want to spend there and how much time you have. So it can be a very short process or it can be a longer process.
They call this type of caucus a firehouse caucus. And you're right, there'll be an opportunity to watch a five-minute presentation from each of the candidates that are running there and to talk to people a little bit, but there's also an opportunity just to go drop off your ballot and move on. It'll last at most an hour and a half. But generally, we're excited that the benefit of a caucus, you know, I've got four kids, and usually when I have to go vote, I've got to leave the four kids with my wife, I go vote, then she comes and votes. In this case, it's a caucus, it's a community event, it's a family event. We'll bring our kids and we'll go take turns, and our kids will talk to the other kids there or some of our neighbors and friends. It's supposed to be a community event where we can talk to one another, we can have a little bit of community camaraderie. You kind of answered my question, Santos, but I'm honored to acknowledge that this is a caucus, one of those rare, heavily instituted, where you have a chance to have deliberate dialogue. If you're one like me, you'll hang up an entire hour and a half, you will try and convince your friends and neighbors to vote the way that you want, you will do what they consider electioneering, and will be a no-no during the primary, but you'll be there, you'll hand out buttons, you'll talk about the positive qualities of your candidate, and you'll try and sway some votes. At the very least, you'll meet your friends and neighbors, and you'll get to know who lives next door to you. And we will get, have a big impact on the direction of our country. As was mentioned earlier, Idaho has 32 delegates, which is disproportionately large for our state. It's more than many other states across the Union because we are a red state because of the way the presidential campaigns work. And we are going to be sixth in the nation. So we have an opportunity to influence who will potentially be the next President of the United States.
Okay, our next question from Precinct 52, Jonathan Cook.
My question is, what is the Republican Party's position on red flag laws and extended background checks?
You asking me or you asking yourself? General, I think the Republican Party is pretty strongly against red flag laws as well as expanded background checks. We're fortunate to live in Idaho. I believe we're probably number one as far as gun rights in the Union. And our platforms speak strongly about our support for that, and our state legislature has continued to advance those rights, and we hope they continue to further. So there's some laws actually coming up right now to speaking about gun rights.
So that is, again, our plea is for you to understand that we are trying to watch the legislature. Last, the last meeting that was here with all the legislatures that we came to, I went up afterwards to talk to one of the legislators, and I said to him, "How many bills came across your desk?" Because he said, "You knew what I was voting for. You can see what I'm voting for." And I said, "How many bills came across your desk?" "Over 500." And I said, "That is the thing. We are a representative republic. You are there to represent your constituency. I can't read 500 bills to know what's going across your desk every day. You're supposed to be representing me because I'm not doing this full-time. I didn't get elected to do it. That's not my job to do it. That's what you..." I didn't get elected to do it, that's not my job to do it, that's what you signed up to do." We're struggling with that, our legislators are not representing maybe like they should be, but as a committee, as Legislative District Chairman Doyle and Doug and Jaleen, they're trying really hard to watch what's going on in Boise. Beverly is killing herself to get things onto our website so that you can be informed. So these red flag laws still are a worry in Idaho. If you go to our website, try to pay attention to what Beverly's putting up there, what Nick is looking at, what our legislative, we have Legislative District pages, are they there yet, are they coming? They're there yet, so go to those Legislative District pages to try, we're trying to keep you informed. Then it's your job, especially those of us as PCOs, to hold those legislators accountable and to take that information on to your Legislative District, or I mean, to your precinct. And again, hopefully, you know, the caucus is going to allow us for people to come, know who we are, have dialogue. We are going to say, "Go to the website if you need to know things, call your PCO," but it's hard to watch over 500 bills that went through the legislature last January, February, March.
One of the other things that I'll just kind of comment on for Lisa is the Communications Committee. If anybody has extra time on their lunch break, pull up the website for the legislator for this particular session, I don't remember off the top of my head what it is, but just check it a couple of times a week and see what bills are coming through, because we can't keep track of everything, but we would love to hear from you guys. The more eyes that are on things, the better for all of us. The other feature that we've started to add to the website is it's a banner that says "Way to Go Idaho." And so when our legislators pass something good, we want to applaud that. We want our legislators to actually, like, see that we're watching them, not only on the bad stuff, but on the good stuff as well. And so Idaho, it's still an amazing state to live in. Like, we are so blessed to be here. There's a whole lot of fight going on, but there's a whole lot of good stuff that's going on. And so keep an eye on our website, but then also just keep the tab open on the legislative side, and, you know, check it a couple of times and see what's on there. Some of it is a lot of legalese and a lot of political mumbo jumbo, but some of it, you can read the summaries and you can get an idea of what's going on. If you have questions, ask us, ask your PCO, we want that dialogue.
Follow-up questions on that question?
So at Bonneville, we average about 1,200 people per precinct, that's an average. So ideal, an ideal situation is to have a PCO for every precinct, and then have three APCOs, so you've got four people, and you divide the precinct into quarters, so you end up with 300 people in each quarter. Because it's almost impossible for one person to go around and see 1,200 people and deal with them and everything like Peggy was talking about. But if we can divide it up, if we get more volunteers and get APCOs, and then they stay in tune with what she's talking about, it's much easier for those to go out and those 300, and especially when you do them right next to your neighborhood, right where you live at ideally, that's the ideal logistics world, and we're striving for that, but we're not there, we need help. And so we'd love to have APCOs and people come help the PCOs to get the word in.
And I wanted to add on as well, I failed to mention earlier, but we need to recognize our legislative districts in our county. We have Doyle and Doug and Jaleen. The state is divided up into legislative districts, which overlap and extend beyond counties, but as a Republican Party, we have multiple organizations and levels, and each precinct officer in a legislative district forms a committee there as well. And those legislative districts and their chairman are doing yeoman's work right now, because it's the legislative session, tracking the legislation that's going on and keeping track of our legislators, and they deserve a lot of recognition for the hard work they're doing. As we said earlier, we encourage everyone to go to our website at BonnevilleGOP.com and get the tracking there. There's also many others, just handed me one, there's ThinkLibertyIdaho.org, 2024-bill-tracker. There's many out there, and it's important for us to track our legislation as it goes on this time of year.
All right, well, Stand Up For Idaho thinks it's time for some non-political fun, so make sure you grab a flyer for their First Annual Heart and Soul Valentine Gala, it's an adult-only event. Looks like a fun time on February 10th, and you can get a flyer over there by the door. What's our next question?
Yeah, I actually had a follow-up question to Nick. Earlier on this evening, you had made the comment that, you know, where you come from, that's called a lie. And how do we, as Republicans, kind of shift our mindset a little bit? We generally want to believe the good in people, we want to believe that people walk in integrity and they have good faith intentions. And a lot of what we talked about tonight is feeling like we have to almost be cynical and sniff out a lie. And so how do we, how do we make that adjustment when we're looking at politicians, when we're looking at any of the process? Give some advice on how do you just shift your mindset a little bit on that?
That's a tough question. In general, politics is hard work. You know, they talk about the term "how the sausage is made." It's hard work to work in the world of politics. It's hard work to form consensuses, to debate and discuss. These are, the issues we talk about in the world of politics, they matter, they matter a lot. You know, our children will reap the consequences of our decisions as a community, as a party, as an organization, and as the government that we elect. That's not easy, and none of us are perfect in that. What we do in the world of politics is often involves compromise, and we do the best we can to advance the principles that we believe in, those most important principles. It requires, especially in a community like Bonneville County, it requires us to be tough and to stand up and to talk to one another and have tough conversations sometimes. We have to have those candid conversations. I get phone calls sometimes asking me about candidates on the ballot. And in many cases, I know most of them, they're my friends, and I have to answer those questions honestly, and say, "You know, this person's better on this topic, this person's better on this topic. If you believe in the principles of the Republican Party here, you need to think about that." And at the end of the day, it's up to each one of us, and our children and our grandchildren will reap the benefits of what we do. But we have to do that hard work, and it's important.
One last tech, when he talked earlier about the vetting, or the questionnaires, when that team does that, they put that on the website, so when you see these candidates flowing through the system, stay watching that website, and you can watch these questionnaires, you can see how all these different candidates are answering these questions. It's really quite an eye-opener, and it's really a great viewpoint for the public to see.
If you want to learn how to develop a healthy political skepticism, go back to what we were talking about before, watching bills make their way through the legislature. They could propose a bill that you would have to smile when the sun is up, and you'll say to yourself, "Hey, that's great, community, and we'll all be happy and it'll be awesome." And then watch it make its way to committee, and then watch it never go anywhere, and then find out that it was put in a drawer and they're not even going to discuss it. And you say to yourself, "Wait a minute, don't we want to smile? How could this not make it out of committee? How could this not make it before the body to be voted on?" Watch bill after bill, that you know you would say yes to, that you know would benefit this community, basically get strangled in the crib and dying committee.
So Benjamin Franklin said, "A republic if you can keep it." Personally, I think, I don't know about y'all, but I'm not content to just trust politicians to do the right thing, or to trust that they will perfectly represent us and that they will perfectly follow our party platform. We have to be stewards of our republic, it's our job, and it's part of being, living in a democracy, it's what you have to do. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't participate in government anymore, and so those of us that are involved, it's our duty and our obligation to stand up and call out politicians, even if they're the same party as us, if they're not fulfilling their constitutional oaths.
If I may change direction just a second, I want to address this question to the current PCOs that are striving to staff their organizations for the caucus. I have been working to try to find people to help on that day. At the last election we had, I believe it was for school district trustees, I was there at my precinct, and when I got done voting, I asked the election judge and all of her helpers if they would be willing to help me run the caucus. And without one exception, they all said absolutely not. And I said, "Why?" "Because it's a lot of work and we've done our work." Do you have any suggestions from current PCOs as to how you're getting people to volunteer and say yes? I've talked to a PCO when I came in, he had the same reaction. I have nobody that will accept the calling to help. Do you have any ideas?
That is a constant struggle. I'm fortunate, in my precinct, I've got over a half dozen people already lined up that are willing to help and participate and make this happen. But a caucus requires a lot of work in every precinct, and I think one of the struggles is often people don't know. They don't know that there is an opportunity and that there's a need. I guess I'm an optimist, I believe that people in Bonneville County are wonderful people. And generally, if they become aware of the fact that there's a need, I think those people will step forward. But we've got to reach out to our friends and neighbors, and we've got to let them know that they are needed and that they will make a difference, and that we need to participate that way.
Walt's going to go down to the homeless shelter.
Here's a thought, as opposed to just saying, "Can you help, will you help?", have a list, and I've talked to somebody about this, and we're going to bring you into the meeting that we're going to have with Precinct 15, I think, and have a list of, okay, these are the jobs we need people to do. Somebody to set up tables, somebody to sit at the table and sign people in, somebody to count the ballots, you know what I'm saying? This is the job. And so as opposed to saying, "Will you help?", in general, say, "Will you come set up tables?" You know, "Will you come count ballots?" And give them a task, and say, "Can you do that task?" You know, that might be a better way to approach it.
I would suggest maybe going to students. I don't know if the high schools will let you into their government classes, but I think you should go make a pitch to your government teachers. And if not, I think you should go make a pitch to the American Heritage students, because when I went to American Heritage School, our venue, New Sweden Venue, was too small, went to the American Heritage School, and the administrators wanted to volunteer. And if the administrators want to volunteer, I'll bet you could get some of their students to help you too.
If you went to the schools and asked this idea that Lisa had, is there an age limit? Do they have to be registered in order to participate? I do not know that.
There's not a specific regulation on that, Joe. You, as a precinct officer, have a lot of leeway on your caucus. This was discussed actually with the state recently, and they've recommended that as well, get kids to help. You probably don't want to put the youngest kids, you know, counting the ballots. But you can have kids, can and should have kids participate, we need ushers, we need people to help man the stations there and to be able to participate there. So there's not a specific regulation, that's going to be up to your discretion, but I believe kids can, can and should participate.
We live in a representative democracy, and that's a participative republic. It's something that we need to do on the ground floor. Our constitution, federal or state, was not created by a bunch of lawyers in a room, it was created by farmers and businessmen and people just like you and me. It's the best that we can. I don't want to bring religion into politics, but there's a concept that stands important. It's a question that has come up to my mind, and it should be thought of with intent. Is our Lord Jesus Christ, for those who believe, is the Lord of Lords and the King of Kings? But the question comes down is, who is the Lords and the Kings that Jesus is the Lord and Lords of? Who are the Kings that Jesus is the King of Kings of? And I believe it's those who participate in this type of process, that we are those Lords and those Kings that He is training us to be.
Any other comments on this topic? We are at about 15 minutes to nine.
Kind of touching on that a little bit farther and stepping back on Jonathan's comments about accountability for our elected officials, I've been saying it for a while and I'll say it again. We, as the taxpayer, as the constituent, we are the employer, they are the employee. I don't know of any other industry, any other business, or any other organization, that the employee gets to walk all over the employer like they do in politics.
All right, Kelly wants to make a quick announcement about...
Okay, so this is on behalf of our local government committee, they had a previous engagement, but they are hosting the movie Monumental. If some of you guys have seen it, this is Kirk Cameron, came out a few years ago, and it goes back and tracks the journey of our forefathers here to America. It's showing two nights, it's free of charge, it's first come, first served, we're not saving seats or anything, it's at the Paramount, and February 22nd and 23rd. So mark your calendars, bring your kids, invite your neighbors, this is a great opportunity to just remind people the foundation that America was founded on. And so there are flyers on the table there, if you guys want to grab some on the way out.
All right, so we're reaching the end of our evening, this will be our last call for any final comments or questions.
I've been staring at this guy up there on the board all night. He looks like a PCO. Recruiting people for the caucus.
I'm not sure which one of our PCOs that is, we'll have to think about that one for a minute. We'll work on that.
If you'd like what you're hearing, and you want to become part of what we're doing and participate in APCOs, PCOs, or volunteer for the caucus, or any of that stuff, please come over, we've got some little cards, we need your contact data. We have voter registrations, but we normally don't have, the phone numbers don't have emails, so it's hard to interact with people unless you tell us to interact. So please come over, fill them out, and we'll put you on the list, you're not going to get any spam, you are going to get stuff about the county and that we've talked about tonight and going forward. But yeah, we'd love to have more information, we'd love, if you want to volunteer, let us know here, so that's where we're at.
We are part of the state of Idaho. I would like to announce that March 4th is Idaho Day, and there's going to be a big activity down, I don't know if it's at the Civic or down at the Colonial, to celebrate Idaho Day. And it's really been worked up well. Many of you might know Lyndon Bateman, who was a former legislator, he's in charge of this, and anything he's in charge of is well-done. So I wanted to make a plug for Idaho Day.
Yeah, maybe that's something we can get on our website, yes, sir?
That's his birthday.
Ah, the truth. All right, folks, it's been great talking to you all tonight. There's all kinds of literature for this event and all the Central Committee information, grab what you need as you're going out. Maybe take some of those caucus flyers for your neighbors, people you know, sons, daughters. Encourage, like my son said here, encourage your children to get involved. If they're of voting age, they should be going with you to this caucus. That's how we're going to keep this going, so I'm going to turn this over to...
It's okay, it's okay. It's okay, it's okay, I'm just going to detour real quick. So if you have not already liked our Facebook page and followed our Facebook page, Bonneville County GOP, Bonneville GOP, sorry, please like that. We're going to be posting a whole lot more updates, and we have some folks who are getting really active on getting information out, thanks to the Communication Committee amazingness. And so make sure and like and follow that. Also, just kind of keep your ears and eyes open, we are going to be doing Lincoln Dinner sometime in March or April, we're waiting on confirmation from a very, very special guest. And so it's going to be amazing, this is, I'm actually more excited about this Lincoln Dinner than I've been in a long time, so stay tuned on that.
Yes, and help us spread the word that you are the face of the Republican Party in Bonneville County, you good folks, and good folks like Nick here, we're going to turn it over to him.
I just want to thank everybody. Thank the officers for coming tonight, answering questions, and thank you for coming. We've had some of the media here, we appreciate them, as well as our other groups that have been here, and CI gave us the room tonight as well, and so we appreciate everyone, and I hope you all have a good night.